Update. We have Marvin Martin Harris, Acting Director of DPWT. Andrea Lasker, Vision Zero Coordinator for the Department of Public Works and Transportation. We have Major Snika Smith, Prince George's County Police Department. We have Tim Kearns, Director of M.D.O.N.V.A., Maryland Highway Safety Office. Uh, when you all are pre- prepared, uh, Mr. Harris, you're gonna start your presentation.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the councils. It's great to see you all in, uh, 2D. Hopefully we'll see you all sometimes sit in 3D. Um, Happy New Year, because I don't think I've had a chance to say that to everyone. Um, really quickly, I also want to thank you all for, um, working with us through the, uh, the, the snow events that we've had to kick off 2022. Um, you know, we haven't had anything like that in about three years or so. So, uh, you know, it was a little bit of a, a little bit of a readjustment for folks to, to get back, uh, used to that and, 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 uh, taking it seriously. And I, and I can't blame folks. It was, you know, seventy degrees the day before we got the huge snow, and we hadn't seen one of these in, 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 in three years. So, uh, thank you all for working with us, us through that and through that process. And, um, I'd like to say I hope that we don't have to do that again. I can't make-
Hey, Martin.
Yes, sir.
Oh, I should have, um, we at the end of this and we can keep journeying through it. Colleagues, I apologize. I should have asked if you all wanted to take a brief break. Well, you just now that I've asked Martin to start, you wanna go ahead and move through this presentation? Thank you. Keep going, Martin. I just was discourteous in not asking my colleagues, so I felt bad.
I, I will, I will, uh, take note of the, the hard work that you all have, have been doing over the last several hours. Also, I see while the chief is still here, I do want to thank the chief for his help through, uh, the snow operations and, uh, for collaborating with us as well, both him and, and Chief Green. They actually play, uh, a, a, a kind of key little background part in helping us as we, as we go through this. So, so thanks, Chief, for that and also for the, the Vision Zero support. Um, if you don't mind, I know that, um, we have, uh, Tim Kearns from the Maryland Highway Safety Office here, uh, with us, and he's, uh, gonna be a key part of this presentation. But I believe he has a time commitment issue, if I'm correct. Tim, is that correct? Um, so if that's the case, I, um, I, I think maybe I would like to, rather than start with Andrea, maybe go to him, because, um, as you all know, the state's kind of the, the, plays a major role in gathering the information about what's going on as far as safety issues here. And I want to make sure that we at least get him, uh, to be able to address you all while he, while we do have a few minutes. So if that's okay, I'd like to go to Mr. Kearns.
Uh, sure, Martin. Uh, thank you very much. I, I, we do have a presentation. I don't know if you put it up and I'll be able to see it, or if I'll be improv-ing through. Uh, there we go. Uh, yeah, thank you very much, uh, for the opportunity, and I do apologize. Uh, actually, my, my, uh, conflict is with our Strategic Highway Safety Plan, because we are in the process of hiring an impaired driving coordinator. So we tried to figure out how to squeeze in fourteen interviews with the interview panel that we have was kind of difficult. So we did have one at 2:30 that I have on hold right now. But I, I do want to thank you, uh, very much for taking the time, and Andrea invited me to participate. And, uh, Prince George's County, as, as you are all well aware, is a, a very important partner of ours in driving the state's, uh, highway, uh, fatality numbers down and in developing their own Strategic Highway Safety Plan. Uh, you can advance the slide. Uh, if you're not familiar with the Highway Safety Office, uh, my name is Tim Kearns. I am a Director of Highway Safety Office. We are within, uh, Maryland Department of Transportation's, uh, Motor Vehicle Administration. Uh, and our team works, uh, you know, every day to reduce the number of crashes and fatalities through motor vehicle crashes. Uh, Zero Desk, Vision Zero is the program that you are all very familiar with as, as what you have operating at Prince George's County. Uh, Vision Zero is one of many, uh, zero-type, uh, programs that are, uh, being put together across the country. Uh, you might be familiar with the legislation that, uh, the Maryland General Assembly passed in 2019 that kind of makes Vision Zero, uh, Maryland a Vision Zero state and does set a goal for us of zero fatalities and zero serious injuries by 2030. Uh, as you might expect, this is a very ambitious goal, and it's something that we all feel is necessary, because I'm sure that you all agree that any number greater than zero on our roadways of, of fatalities or, or injuries at all is unacceptable to all of us. So all of these programs do work together. It, it doesn't matter whether they're called Vision Zero or, um, there's a road to zero. Uh, Maryland used to be a towards-zero-death state. It was a, that was a, an Ash-toe endeavor. They, they all work the same way. We all want to get to zero. In fact, the, the tagline that you'll hear now is "Building a Safe System." Uh, that is a federal highway, uh, initiative that, uh, State Highway is, our Maryland State Highway Administration is also a part of. But whether you hear it being talked at the state level as Vision Zero, or our Zero Desk Maryland webpage, or it's a "Building a Safe System," it is putting all of the components together. It's making sure we take all of our partners and their cooperation and collaboration and communication to effectively, uh, reduce roadway crashes. You can go to the next slide, please. Every five years, Maryland puts together a Strategic Highway Safety Plan. Uh, as part of this plan, we identify the key areas for, uh, to address when it comes to highway safety. Those would be the, uh, areas on, in the gold there on the, our circle. Uh, we have, those are our emphasis areas. We have, within the Highway Safety Office, uh, emphasis area team leads. So whether it is, uh, document protection and distracted driving, uh, speed and aggressive driving, non-motorized, which are pedestrians and, and bicyclists, and impaired driving and highway infrastructure. We have folks that are responsible for each one of these, uh, program areas, and they meet quarterly. The other thing that we've asked, uh, across the state, and it came from the Secretary, uh, back when Pete Ron was Secretary, uh, Greg Slater continued, and I'm sure that Jim Porch will continue it as well. We've asked the local jurisdictions to come up with their own Strategic Highway Safety Plan. Uh, Prince George's County was on the forefront of developing their plan, and, and you are all very familiar with that, and you'll hear more about where you've gone with Andrea. But having the individual jurisdictions be able to develop their own plan is very important to us, because at the state level, you might imagine that we kind of have to be all things to all people. The Strategic Highway Safety Plan is what we build our annual highway safety plans around. We really can't do any activities, uh, on an annual basis within our highway safety plan if it's not included in this five-year plan. So it, we do make it very broad, and it, it's kind of all-encompassing. At a local level, however, you are able to drill down much more into the data. You can see the whole Strategic Highway Safety Plan is focused on data. You're able to drill down into your own data a little bit more and maybe focus on more of those key emphasis areas or those key target groups, uh, for Prince George's County or from whatever jurisdiction, uh, may be, uh, putting together their own plan than we can necessarily do, uh, those kind of specifics at a state level. Uh, the objectives and our targets that we have built in the SHSP, if you were to download and take a look at it, you will notice that they are not zero yet. Uh, our plan runs to 2025, and to be in compliance with our federal partners, we have to have data-driven targets. So we can't be quite as ambitious as zero, even though, you know, deep down, that's where we want to be. So when you see more, uh, conservative targets, that's why they're there. We want to make sure that they're incremental steps that we can make. Uh, if you hop to the next slide, I think I can talk a little bit about where we are now. Uh, our Zero Desk, oh, no, sorry, uh, went in between that. Uh, Pedestrian Safety Action Plan, uh, is a product of the State Highway Administration. They are in the process of developing that. You're okay with the next slide? Uh, they were just taking comments, but I think their, a comment period has closed, but it is, uh, designed to work with our non-motorized pedestrians. As you can imagine, are, are among our most vulnerable road users, along with bicyclists and, and even motorcyclists. So being able to, uh, work with them and attendant a Vision Zero is to try to separate, you know, pedestrians from the vehicles. Uh, speed is also a big component, because the higher the speed, the more likely there is to be a serious injury or a fatality. Uh, as it says on the right hand, "We are driven by safety," and that's not just the State Highway Administration, but it's all Maryland Department of Transportation, and we are focused on driving our numbers down to zero. Now, if you go to the next slide, I think I can tell you where we are. So on our ZeroDeskMD.gov website, uh, monthly, at the beginning of each month, we do post where we are year-to-date. Uh, we did update this a little bit more recently, so everybody can kind of see where we were. 2021 is still, uh, being updated, is still under review, so that 542 number is actually 547 right now. So while we did a little bit better in 2021 in terms of fatalities, uh, compared to 2020, which was just an absolutely terrible year, uh, 2021 was a little bit better, and our neighboring states didn't have quite the same, uh, quite the same result. A number of states went up in fatalities even in 2021. 2020, with the advent of the pandemic, it did change driving behaviors, uh, we've noticed quite significantly. Uh, I'm sure you've seen the news reports of increased speeds, uh, and increased impaired driving, uh, but the reduced traffic on the roads led to actually fewer crashes, because there are fewer opportunities to interact with other vehicles. But the crashes that did occur, uh, tended to be more serious, and we did have more fatalities. 2021 was a little bit better. Unfortunately, 2022 is not off to a great start. You can see that there are twenty-six fatalities there. Uh, this chart was actually as of a week ago. That twenty-sixth number is now forty. So, uh, 2022 is also not off to a good start. So we do have a lot of work ahead of us, but it's working with partners like yourselves and, and Andrea and Martin that have put together these local plans that, that we feel we can start to turn this around. Uh, attention has been diverted a little bit from highway safety, uh, but we do need to make sure that we refocus, because this isn't going anywhere. Hopefully, we can, uh, make other public health advances, but highway safety, we do need to make sure that, uh, we go all-in in reducing these numbers. I think that's the last of my slides. But I do want to thank you all for your attention. I apologize, I, I kind of raced through these a little bit. If you have any questions for me, before I turn it over back to, uh, to Martin and Andrea, I'll be happy to answer them.
Colleagues, are there any questions for Mr. Kearns? Well, I believe, Mr. Kearns, you have to leave. I just want to make sure my colleagues, if they have questions, they, for you, that they get a chance to ask you. I see Councilmember Tavari's hand.
Uh, thank you for those numbers. Have, um, have you aligned these numbers with COGS, uh, regional goals? And my next question is, have you accounted for the fact that self-driving vehicles like Tesla have incorporated an aggressive driving feature? And what would that mean and how that would look like, um, on the road and, and the results that can come about that? And have there been any modeling around?
Uh, we do work, uh, closely with WashCOG as well as the Baltimore Metropolitan Council. So the, uh, MPOs have a slightly different process by which they set their goals and targets. However, they do use, uh, the same information, and we do work together. Uh, our targets are, the targets that we have to set, uh, kind of have guidelines provided by, uh, whether it's National Highway Traffic Safety Administration or Federal Highway. Uh, WashCOG is a little bit more, uh, they can set what they want. They don't have the same kind of guidelines or restrictions on their, on their goals. They can be more aggressive or less aggressive as they would like. Uh, with regard to Tesla and all automated vehicles, uh, it is, uh, moving towards vehicle automation. At some point, we'll start to reduce the number of, uh, crashes and fatalities. However, we are quite away from, quite a ways away from having that technology throughout the fleet and in enough vehicles that it wouldn't make any significant changes in the near term. They certainly do help, uh, the, the drive, the advanced driving assistance systems that are in there, the, the lane control and the automatic braking. Uh, there is, uh, not only anecdotal, but research that shows it reduces the number of crashes. So there is hope on the horizon, but as long as we have, uh, the human element behind the wheel, we still have a lot of work to do with in terms of, uh, our four Es of highway safety.
Yeah, but, but, um, yes, so I, I agree with you. That's typical of how Tesla has rolled out, is driving assistant. But this year, they just finished introducing an aggressive driving feature to the assistant. I can put a link on here for you to read up on it, but they have one that's calm, which is the reason why people get pissed off, because the, the online, the, the self-driving vehicle drives at the speed limit, and everybody is pissed off, right? That was the Pittsburgh story a couple of years ago. And now this aggressive feature, if you want to take it up a notch and drive a little faster, what that would mean and what that would look like on the road. And so-
Uh, I'd, I'd love to see the link. I think there's quite a few questions that will still need to be answered.
Yeah, I don't think it's-
Are you, are, are-
I think it's been studied enough.
Is Tesla allowing the vehicle to go over the speed limit?
I mean, in essence, that, that's the idea, but, uh, let me put it in.
Yeah. So, yeah, I think there's a lot of questions needed to be answered.
Yeah. Any additional questions for Mr. Kearns before I turn it over to Martin Harris? Mr. Harris? Thank you, Mr. Kearns.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate your time.
Tim, thank you as usual. We appreciate your partnership. Um, Mr. Chair-
Any other questions come up, please let me know.
Um, sure, thank you very much. Um, um, I just want to, before Andrea starts, um, going into sort of the, you know, the larger portion of, of our program, um, along with the, the, uh, police who are, who are joining us for this, um, I just want to sort of pick up where, 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 where Tim just left off with, with the stats. Um, everybody knows that we've been through, um, quite a change, um, in terms of behavior and, and usages on the roads as a result of, of the pandemic. And to be honest with you, the numbers are, the volume numbers have returned closer to normal, but the patterns are still kind of screwy. And so, um, you know, it makes it very difficult to, um, you know, to be able to, to, to deploy in a way that addresses, you know, a new behavior pattern. So what our Vision Zero folks have been really working on is trying to learn as much of compounds, much data, as much information, and as many best practices as we can. Um, but a lot of this, to be real honest with you all, is, is an educational, not just, not just, um, we're gonna talk about the engineering stuff, which is obviously very important as well, but we've got a, we need your help as, as our leaders to change the mentality of folks that are utilizing our streets. Just literally just yesterday, on my way to taking my son, uh, to basketball practice, two young gentlemen who look a lot like me were walking around, uh, right around dark, um, dark clothes, um, headphones on. And because I, you know, because of what I do, I carry around a bunch of these safety vests and, and flashes and things like that, so I stopped the car. I stopped the car, pulled them over, and put them in, you know, our yellow safety vests, because we keep getting so many people who are going about life in a dangerous way. Um, and you notice a lot of our, as you look at the data, a lot of our fatalities are fatalities like this, where somebody was crossing somewhere and they weren't seen and they were hit. And so we need a lot of help, um, in, not just on the, on the engineering side and the enforcement side, but also on the education side. We'll talk about, um, little parts of this throughout this, but this is something that we really, you know, every, every one of these, I get, I get reports every weekend, and it hurts my heart. You know, I, I see this every weekend, we lose X number of our fellow residents, um, to, to these things that are oftentimes quite avoidable. So that's, I just ask for your help with that. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Andrea.
Thank you so much. Can we go back to maybe the second slide? And we're gonna follow along in terms of what we're gonna be discussing today. Um, so just wanted to say we're very honored and pleased to be here with you today, County Council, and, um, of course, to provide key updates and looking at how we're tracking our progress. Uh, next slide, please. So, um, we did want to start with, um, you know, the vehicle laws that support our goals, and we know that you're all looking at different, um, vehicle laws at the state level and at the local level. And, um, we are here with our key partner, Prince George's County Police Department, um, that looks to implement new CB 783 2021, um, with the goal to make our roads safer by expanding speed monitoring in residential neighborhoods. And I think that the next stage is to have a public hearing for this. So we're looking forward to those next steps. Um, next slide, please. Uh, we just wanted to kind of highlight some of our outreach that has taken place in the last quarter. Um, and we are available to support your events. Um, we do have our Vision Zero Hub, which is our redesigned website. Um, we have a bike and pedestrian campaign that focuses on be seen, be alert, be safe. Um, and we've looked to have people take our safety pledge. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, we have a lot of support from our, um, enforcement and emergency response. Um, we were able to host the Street Smart Fall Campaign at the kickoff event in Oxon Hill in November, and our own Acting Director, Martin Harris, was one of the key speakers, along with Major Smith, um, from the Police Department, and Chrissy Neiser from M.D.O.N.V.A. and other leaders in the region. Um, and this kicked off the Street Smart Fall Campaign when the clocks were changing, just to remind people again about their behavior as drivers and thinking about how, um, shorter days might impact their, um, safety. And, um, the Police Department conducted a high-profile enforcement efforts around this. Um, we got a lot of media coverage. So I think you've seen the Street Smart displays before, and this is just, you know, continuation of that, of being able to get that information out there. Um, next slide, please. Um, we have been getting information out at the Motor Vehicle Administration's. Um, so we're, again, looking for state support. Um, I think we've reached over a thousand people in person. Uh, we've provided road safety awareness about Vision Zero more generally and, um, safety giveaways. And of course, we're just looking to keep the conversation going with people as they return to their families and friends, let them know, um, that we're looking to spread these kinds of messages. New paragraph, I mean, new slide, please. Um, so even within our own county, we're working with our coworkers, and we're contributing to the culture of safety. Um, we're looking at, you know, we've done training with our field staff and kind of tying in litter reduction, because overall, we want livability and safe streets to support each other. So it's not as though any of these issues are separate, but really, you know, how is being out there repairing our roads and making our roadways, um, safer, contributing to the safe streets for everyone? And next slide, please. Um, we have the Police Department, which leads the regular enforcement initiatives, which are based on the National Highway Safety Office and Maryland Highway Safety Calendar. And, um, these partnerships bridge our efforts, um, as we're ensuring a safe transportation system. Um, today, we have Deputy Chief Chris Price, um, here at the table, and we've also worked very closely with Major Smith and others in the Police Department on a continuous basis. Um, next slide, please. So, um, kind of, these are some of our recent initiatives, pledges and incentives, giving things out, um, being part of the Street Smart Fall Event. We have, um, plans to have the Shattered Lives Testimonial Wall at the Prince George's Community College, and we'll send you a notice for the upcoming display dates. Um, we had proposed February 1 to 3, but it looks like that may be shifted to Valentine's Day, um, later in the month. And, um, again, reaching out through the Motor Vehicle Administration, full-service offices in Beltsville and Largo, um, we were able to do a lot of work the last quarter of 2021. We've kind of paused that. They asked us, they've kind of, um, ratcheted down some of the, um, in-person events, uh, but we hope to be back as the weather warms. And then, within our own county, conducted training with field staff and others, um, you know, linking safety with the green, with pride and litter reduction, and how can we strengthen that? And then, uh, working with, um, M.C.P.P.C., who's leading the Master Plan of Transportation, and the Stakeholder Group is providing input on how Vision Zero should be integrated into that, um, plan, which is for a five-year effort. Um, next slide, please. So regarding tools for tracking progress and county-specific projects and data, we just wanted to highlight and ask for your help in promoting the redesigned, more accessible site, which is our Vision Zero Hub. Um, so we'll, um, be doing social media campaigns and boosted social media posts. Um, we will hope to send you a two-page update, um, later this week, and, um, doing a whole bunch with traffic safety giveaways. So next slide, please. Um, this is the website, www.visionzeroprincegeorge's.com. Um, you know, we know, like, this is just one platform, but really, we want to strengthen our public engagement, make the content accessible, communicate our progress, enhance our data and access for, um, what the mapping programs are in our crash data, and, and we're able to target specific audiences. So we're fortunate that, um, we're able to engage these kinds of resources and, um, looking towards these objectives. Uh, our specific audiences being, you know, young people, um, and we're looking at trying to get in with the schools. We do have a youth, uh, uh, starting youth ambassadors program, because we do know that peer-to-peer education is so important. Um, and on our website, we kind of offer these different pages. We have stuff for kids, specifically for kids, um, and then, uh, a whole bunch of other resources. Um, next slide, please. And just in terms of other updates, again, we have partnerships with the Maryland Department of Transportation. Um, we have continued task forces and meetings. Um, we're looking to have involvement in resources, public information, and promotion, so we do want to get those updates into your email, um, and then, which will include things like our engineering projects and learning about, um, up-to-date progress on the project map, which is online. Um, so I guess as we kind of keep going with this, if you have other information that you're looking for on a regular basis and fill our gaps, please let us know, and we'll kind of focus in on that again. Um, and then, the next slide, please. So finally, um, we did one, before we, um, had turned to the data, we wanted to just look at our grants and funding and acknowledge the technical support we're receiving, along with some, um, you know, monetary funds. Um, so we have enforcement initiatives through the Maryland Highway Safety Office, which really do focus on behavioral change. Um, we have two smaller grants, the Bike and Pedestrian Safety, Be Seen, Be Alert, Be Safe, and Shattered Lives Testimonial Display, being able to have that in different locations throughout the county, um, over the next, uh, I guess, six to nine months. And then, um, through MWCOG, we can receive technical assistance through the Transportation Land Use Connection Program, the Pedestrian Roadway Safety Audits. We've got, um, two different, um, studies going on that are, um, looking at the county high-injury network corridors, and one is in combination with Montgomery County on Maryland 650. And then, um, we also have a program called Planting Seeds for Regional Roadway Safety, One Traffic Garden at a Time. We have one traffic garden here in the county thus far, and we're identifying other sites. Um, and this would be to put together a resource guide. And then, um, of course, we've continued with the funding through the state and the federal. The TAP, um, grant has given us improvements around nineteen schools that are in process, and we're also focused on the Blue Line Corridor. So, I mean, these are just, uh, broad outlines of projects that we're working on, and we would like to give you more specific updates on each of those. Um, so maybe that's something that we'll send through our updates email. Uh, next slide, please. Um, if you do go onto our website, you can kind of drill down into some of these, and these are snapshots, shots, and these are some snapshots, um, that we hope to entice you to visit. Um, so please let us know if you want to see more. Um, and, uh, there's just one more slide, which is focused on our engineering project. Last slide, please. Uh, Marble or Pike Pedestrian Safety Improvements. You know, this is one example of a Vision Zero project that, um, has signage and that is progressing. The CIP projects, um, move, um, move along, and, you know, we are able to give you kind of interim incremental updates, because it's not something that's instant. Um, so we just wanted to leave you with a snapshot of that. And in terms of our action plan and looking at best practices and what we've accomplished, uh, there's a lot more information that we're providing on our new website. So thank you for that, um, opportunity to present to you all today, and if you have any questions, please let us know.
Colleagues, are there any questions? Councilmember Ivy, also Councilmember Terta, check the chat. I'm sorry, Councilmember Ivy.
So it's okay, just a, a quick one. What is a traffic garden? Just curious. Is it like out in the median and you put flowers, or what?
So we have one existing traffic garden, which is adjacent to Watkins Park behind Perrywood Elementary School, and it's a, a basketball-sized, um, miniature roadway network laid out-
Basketball court-sized. Basketball court-sized. Thank you.
Oh, basketball court-sized. And, um, gives kids an opportunity to kind of, uh, learn road safety messages and signage and, uh, have some conflict in a safe place away from real traffic.
So, so what, what, what we're able to do is to, we, it, it basically maps out a little mini-road network that they can go around on. Sometimes they do it on scooters, sometimes they do it on tricycles, and it'll have, you know, it gets, got painted like railroad crossings and stop signs, and, and allows them to be able to understand how they interact with, how traffic interacts with people and people- and people interact with traffic, but it's done on a scale that they can, you know, they can utilize themselves. It's great because, you know, teachers can take students out and, you know, like literally, you know, walk them through and show them how they interact there. It's a way to start getting our youngest people to start realizing that they're part of a moving network. It's not just cars, you know, it's bicycles and footwork and all this kind of stuff like that. So we're trying to do several more of them.
Right, so we are looking at county-owned
Okay.
areas, but if other people have suggestions, we'd be happy to come out and check it out. And yes, we would be installing the facility. We've done it in partnership with the school, the last one in MNCPC. But yeah, it's exciting to think of ruling more of these out.
Councilmember Turner?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Mr. Harris, Acting Director Harris and Ms. Lasker for your outstanding work on this. I know, I think we've, the county has led in this effort amongst the other jurisdictions in the state of Maryland, particularly, you know, I think we're one of the first jurisdictions that do our, our safety plan. So I know that when we have the state Maryland Department of Transportation come in, I know that that's always mentioned as part of their presentation, as they did last year. Mine is just a curious comment. I know we do have, as part of this overall effort, kind of our traffic calming policies. And I'm just curious, do we keep track of how many requests that we get from community members and how many studies we do? I'm just curious, because I know in the case of one of my jurisdictions, we wind up adopting the county's policy for a local policy. And so we get obviously requests from time to time. And, and as I would always tell my residents, you know, there were three particular issues that would always get people's eye or, you know, one of them was obviously residential speeding. And unfortunately, the dark and dirty secret of that is that speeding is not for people coming into the neighborhood. It's people who are in the neighborhood who are doing. So I'm just curious, to what extent do we track that at all if communities are asking for? I know it used to be the threes, now I think we're up to six or something as part of that process and getting them engaged. I'm just curious if we do that at all.
We do, and you're sort of touching on several interrelated things at once. One is, yeah, as far as requests for, for, for traffic studies and analysis and those things, as I look across and I see you all in front of me on the screen here, as I'm looking, I don't think there is, that I don't have at least one either recent or pending traffic study neighborhood question just about everybody. Because, you know, that's something I know that you all deal with, you know, constantly. And, you know, we were a little bit of a pause for those, as I think you all know, for a little while because of coronavirus and the fact that, that, as I mentioned earlier, that traffic pattern was so irregular. Where, you know, school buses and things weren't out there and stuff. But we've, we've picked back up in full, full force doing, doing these, these analyses. So yes, we do keep, we do keep a track of those, Councilmember. I suspect we'll get more as the legislation moves from passage to enactment that relates to residential speed cameras. We are anticipating that. We are already working with our colleagues in, in, in law enforcement. And also, as you know, we share a good amount of information with you all before you all move that legislation back in the fall. Thank you for doing that. So this is a, you know, we're standing on the shore, but this is a wave that we can see coming. And so, you know, we're preparing to, to, to hear off of that. As far as the, you know, the second component of, I want to capture this correct, how we, how we interact, you know, with each, with each other to sort of get to and sort of track where these are coming from and then sort of design our program around that. That's what they get, that's what the people who are in Kate Mazzara's shop and the Traffic Safety Shop do. It's actually, they're quite, they're quite, we have a lot of impressive people, TV, but that's, it's a very impressive team that, that filters into how Andrea works with coordinating with the other agencies to kind of bring this whole thing into one kind of program.
Great, no, I appreciate that. And I know it is something that we get on a regular basis, and we appreciate your work on responding to those. Obviously, you know, it provides a roadmap, for lack of a better term. I'm assuming that you're going to, as we're moving to implement CB 73 from last year, is that still going to be a requirement of getting a speed camera? That you go through the other steps of the traffic calming procedures before a camera will be there? Or is that subject to some conversation?
No, it's not going to be, it's not going to be subject to the exact, because there's a scorecard that goes, you know, that goes into the neighborhood traffic manager thing that adds up to a point scale. I don't think that we'll use the exact same traffic card, but it's going to be, it is going to be looking at a lot of the same stuff. You know, there are some conditions that may not be, you know, present in, you know, a hard, you know, at a, you know, at the back of a cul-de-sac that may be requested for, you know, an NTMP that may be present for where you're looking at a speed camera on a 35 mile an hour road. So there'll be, best way I can say that is the, the general areas will look quite familiar. There might be some slight tweaks as to what the exact measurement components are that get to that. But, but it is, it is definitely subject to evaluation and study. And you all hear, and you've heard a lot in the Vision Zero talk, you're going to hear a whole lot of us talking more about safety, safety, safety as this is rolled out, because that's what this is really all about. No, I appreciate.
And we do have a yard sign program about please slow down, we all live here, which is where people can borrow these yard signs. As you said, like reminding your friends, your neighbors that, about speeding.
I just want to conclude by saying, thank you again for that, Mr. Harris. Because I think, you know, we'll, we'll get some feedback, you know, with the, with the legislation that we passed last year about what the evaluation is for a speed camera in, in a particular community or on a particular road. Obviously, some of that will be based on requests, but obviously there has to be an evaluation to see whether or not that particular roadway meets a certain standard to require that similar. Not so much to the state program, which was, you know, work zones and school zones. That was primarily the criteria. But this one could be more expansive, so the fact that we have criteria to evaluate to say, yes, this street, you know, because of these issues or whether it's a scorecard or otherwise, you know, merits this and one doesn't. So as long as we can explain that to the public, or you can explain that to the public, as we do as well. I, you know, certain things are not being addressed. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Glaros, then Vice Chair Harrison, but Ms. Lasker, how successful have you all, have you all in the traffic garden? How successful have you been growing Nissan leaves? Hey, Ms. Glaros.
The sign, it's late afternoon.
Mr. Chair, you got to give screenwriting credit to Mr. De.
I've waited for you to say something.
That's where the Lotus comes from, too.
I actually just have two quick questions. Councilmember Turner asked us to slow it a few of mine. So just to follow up on his last one, and I apologize, maybe you said this and I just, I, I didn't catch it. But can you just be, share with me what will be the process for this speed? Like, what is the timeline on us establishing a process so that we can, so residents can start requesting speed cameras? And I ask it that way because we actually just, we got a request in yesterday because we, we've all been, the council's been pushing out that this legislation has, you know, we advocated for it and it has moved forward. And so now everyone's asking the question, when can I get a speed camera in my community? So can you help answer that specific question? And then I just have one follow-up.
Sure, I can, I can generally answer your specific question, is probably the best way to say it. And, and she's been sitting quietly without having to chime in on this. But I'm going to turn to Terry Bell, who, as you know, is the executive liaison here. We work with her and through the Executive's Office to make sure that we're prepared for this. But I think that she's been working on the timing, I think, or Mr. Battle might also be involved in that as well, I think. But essentially what will happen is we'll do the hearing, and then it's after that hearing that the, the law will be in effect. And then, after that, we can, we would have to put out the locations and advertise the locations where cameras are initially going. And then, once they go in, yes, sorry, once they go in, as you know, there's a 30-day wait period before you can go between, which is just a warning before you'd actually be able to levy a fine.
So as Ms. Bell maybe answers that question, can you clarify? So if I have residents today calling and saying, we would like a speed camera to be considered an X location. In fact, this call came in actually from our community-oriented police officer who wants to make sure that there's a speed camera put in a specific location as we consider this. Who do I send that request to, I guess, is my first thing? And then, maybe if Ms. Bell could just respond on the timeline piece? Because I think the community is really anxious on this one.
Okay, so that one in specific, Andrea can probably answer because we have a specific liaison with the police for the speed camera program. I mean, maybe Deputy Chief Price wants to, but there was a liaison for the police. Andrea, one.
Oh, so the person who's in charge of that program is Captain Jason Smith, and that falls under the Special Operations.
Okay.
And we'd be in, you know, in discussion with their unit.
Okay, and then the timing on us getting implemented on our end?
So Councilmember Glaros, thank you for the question. We did meet Mr. Harris, Ms. Lasker, was a gentleman from the Revenue Authority and the police. We met with Mr. Battle last week. And it was my understanding, and I'm sure he's still working on that process, that we were going to try to have a hearing of some sort by mid-February. So that's where we are right now. Everyone was still trying to get, you know, the potential locations together and working on that. But it was my understanding we were going to try to schedule something in mid-February. And I'll defer to Mr. Battle to add any additional comments.
Okay, so if there are potential locations, it sounds like if we know potential locations to be considered, we should be sharing them, and does that sound about right? Because everyone seems to be talking about potential locations, potential locations, but I'm not sure what the, who's identifying those locations?
Can I, please? Thank you. Ms. Glaros and members of the council, what's being referred to is a staff-level meeting that we were having to get clarity on what the next steps are in terms of implementing CB 73. Legislation requires specifically that a public hearing be held on potential locations prior to, to get public input on potential locations prior to the first camera being put in place. And so what we're doing is, one, trying to make sure we understand what, what's going to be presented to us by the administration. And then also, you know, how we advertise this to the public in terms of their opportunity to provide comments. So that is what we're working on in, in the background. And so, you know, as soon as we understand what we, what we're getting and we get something from the administration, then of course, our clerk takes over and lets us know how much public notice time we need and when we can have a public hearing, so.
Awesome, thank you, Mr. Battle. I think that asked my question, and I did have something else, but given that that took a few different questions, I will yield to my next colleague, so thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Harrison, Vice Chair Harrison, and then Councilmember Denoga.
I'm going to yield to Councilmember Denoga, Mr. Chair. I know he raised his hand, so Mr. Denoga?
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Ms. Glaros basically asked my question, but it led to another question about process. Before you can put up a camera, that location needs to go to a hearing. But my experience, no?
No, not quite, no. Okay.
Let me, let me just chime in, because again, we've been talking about this a lot, Mrs. Denoga, in, in the background at the staff level to make sure this is clear. The legislation says before the first camera is put in place, the council shall hold a one-public hearing and allow input on potential sites. See what I mean? So it's not a, not for each camera, no. Now, there is a process on the other side that, that occurs right now when the, the cameras that exist now were put in place. There was, you know, a level of public notice that was provided for that. But in terms of the council's public hearing requirement, there is a requirement for one public hearing before the, the program, basically, the residential speed camera program is rolled out, okay?
Okay, I thought, maybe I'm just getting confused with ancient history, but I thought that the state requirement was before you can put this camera up. And they did them like, you know, it's not only the one camera. They did like 20, 30 cameras and said, here's where we're putting them, and there's a public hearing, as I recall, could be totally wrong. But my, my real question is, it's more of a request of the council chair, Mr. Hawkins. We should clarify what, what our role as council members are. And should we reach out to our community associations and get a list? And then we can put all the potential locations in front of the Department of Transportation and the police? And then at least everything's covered, or what should we do? I, I've not been beating, I've got a couple of locations that people bring to us, but we've not gone out. Well, I'm sure there's more, but we, we've not been pushing that issue because there's no process for us. So I'm wondering if we should have an internal process as to what information we should seek and who we should give it to, or should we just rely on Martin?
That's a good point. Mr. Battle, you want to chime in or?
I was just going to articulate, you know, what I've learned up to this point is that there is a comprehensive process that is going on at the Police Department level along with the Department of Public Works in terms of identifying where potential locations could or should be and mostly focusing in on the criteria. And I think that came up in the, in the conversation earlier, what the criteria is going to be.
And I get that, but my, my concern is that's top-down with government telling the people what they're going to get rather than us asking the public, are you aware of situations that, you know, frankly, you know, Martin doesn't know? I mean, Martin can't be everywhere at once.
I think actually we're doing both. We're actually doing both. That's where they will meet in the public hearing.
But Councilmember Denoga, perhaps you should consider looking into where they are now and any suggestions or recommendations you may have for the council to consider. While internal process, we'll take it from me as you work with Mr. Battle.
I will do that, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Vice Chair Harrison?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to be just real quick. I, I was looking at the sign that Ms. Lasker held up, and I was trying to figure out how I can get a, a bunch of those signs to my office so I can get them out to the, to the civic associations as well because I like to put one in my yard that said, "Slow down." There's a lot of individuals that are driving around our neighborhoods. As Mr. Turner said, it, it, it's people in the community that are speeding. So, you know, if, if there's any way, I, I don't know how progressive you are about making sure that Prince Georgians get a yard sign, but I, I actually think that, that's a great look. I applaud you on that, the sign, the yard sign for telling people to slow down.
As Vice Chair, I can assure you that we can get you signs, all right? If I got to bring them over myself, we can get you, we can get you some signs. And I actually, thank, you know, thank you for saying that, because I, I actually kind of liked them myself. You know, I think that they are, they're pretty, they're, they're, they're pretty catchy and they do serve a real, they do serve a real purpose. They're not, you know, none of these things are a magic cure-all for anything, but it, it's kind of, you know, what we're doing with the sixes and, you know, what you all enabled with the residential cameras and what we enable with, with the lawn signs and the awareness and what we enable by putting people in reflective vests. We didn't even mention that, we've given out hundreds of these and putting kids in bike helmets and all that. All that stuff collectively is what moves the, is what, is what starts to move the dial.
I, I would just say, if, if that could be held, I didn't know that the signs existed, maybe shame on me. I would just say, if that could be held, I didn't know that the signs existed, maybe shame on me. That I did not know that, but I think it's just catchy and and is there, I mean, is there a limited capacity on how many signs you have or, I mean, we have more than enough signs, I, you know.
Usually, the reason why, the reason, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
You all say you can borrow the signs. You all actually give the signs out.
Well, where I was going, yeah, where I was going with this, it's actually usually part of a, it's kind of like with the speed trailers. If you put them up for more than a certain period of time, people sort of flatline on them. And so what we've usually done is given them out in neighborhoods for a certain period of time and then gotten them back. But, you know, that's, and the other reason why I may not have known about this, Andy, correct me if I'm wrong, but we weren't doing this like two years ago. This was something that's a relatively, so it's not like you've missed, it's relatively new.
And if I could just have been more quick.
Madam, Madam Councilmember, if Councilmember Turner yields to you, he was next, and he said, you're okay, so please go ahead.
No, I just wanted to say even what we did in my community when that wasn't something that was being done. We just had one of the civic associations just buy like, drive like your children live here. So you could get that off Amazon. We can, and we teamed up with DPWT to do a speed awareness campaign, certain warnings. And but you got to get up like at five, six in the morning and basically be out there and get a group together to let people know, hey. And then with signs, you got to do the cardboard thing and the whole shebang and have people cup coffee, donuts and whatever, and just raise awareness. It's like, and we gave out, I want to say that day, maybe eighty, ninety speeding tickets. Not bad for a day. You know, so, and, you know, that gives people a chance to kind of regroup and slow it up. But the problem is that, you know, once you do that, they'll, they'll, they'll get scared for about three to four months, and then they'll go back to the same old habits. But you gotta, you know, you gotta stay on top of it or figure out ways to put a speed hump or rumble strips on the street to start trying to figure out ways to calm the traffic.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner, I'll be after Councilmember Turner, I'm going to move for a motion to adjourn and let some of my colleagues still have some question and comments that I may have missed. Councilmember Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'll wrap this up. I know the hour is late. Just two points. Obviously, Ms. Taveras just talked about the traffic calming policy that the county adopted, that you have to kind of do these steps first before graduating to, you know, further steps, engineering. And my question originally was, well, do you have to do that before you're going to be eligible for a speed camera in on a residential street? I think you should still do those things in a community because I hope it organized that community. I've been part of those in a couple of areas in both in my district and previously on the city council. The second thing I would do, I would just point to the staff level work group to, I think it was CB thirty-seven. Hold on, let me pull it up real quick. It was, yeah, CB thirty-seven in two thousand nine. That was the original legislation in which Mr. Denoga, he was a co-sponsor. A staff member, I think. And I think what, at that time, and Mr. Denoga is correct, the police department put together the list of locations that they were may put a speed camera. Obviously, those had to be school zones at, under that state legislation or work zones. So it was a little bit more limited. But those were part of the public hearing process in addition to receiving any other requests subsequent to that. So obviously, you know, since that time, other speed cameras have been put out there. We're not required, as Mr. Battle indicated, to have a public hearing for each of those new locations. But if my recollection is, and it's been twelve years, but we can go back to the legislative record, that we had a list that was almost every school potentially that could have one. This is a little bit different because there's so many streets that could be eligible for a speed camera. So I'm not sure if we're going to be able to do that. And that shouldn't preclude us from evaluating any street that comes in after we go through this public hearing process to evaluate it for a speed camera. So I don't think it's, you know, it's one and done and you missed the opportunity. We should, depending on circumstances and our review, that should still be eligible for streets that aren't part of this public hearing. As Mr. Battle said, I think this is just what the state bill requires, that we have a public hearing before we actually go to implementing the program in Prince George's County. So with that, Mr. Chair, thank you, and I will move, thank the department and move for adjournment of this, the county council session.
Properly moved by Councilmember Turner to adjourn, motion to adjourn. It was seconded by Councilmember Denoga. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, bow your hands. Majority prevails. This meeting has adjourned. Mr. Battle, thank you for an outstanding leadership on the staff part on all these updates. Thank you, Martin.